Okay, call the meeting to order, seven o'clock. Will you join us with the college of legions? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is approval of the agenda.
Make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
And a second.
Joe? Yes, I thought we should have an item on the agenda where Mary Lee and I could catch you up on what's happened with respect to the village school. And I'm not sure that we're in position to act on the transfer station fee schedule because I don't think we were provided that.
No, we don't have that, right, right.
So perhaps we could give you our update in lieu of that seven fifty item.
Okay. Anybody have problem with that? Add that to the agenda?
Do I need to amend my motion or?
If you'd like to, sure. Go ahead.
What's our parliamentarian say?
Yeah, since you said as presented, yeah.
So I would, I would like to amend my motion to include the change of substituting a Castleton Village school update in lieu of the transfer station fee schedule changes.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the agenda?
I'm second.
No, second, I'm sorry. Discussion. None? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion as amended. One announcement, the legion has invited us to the flag retirement ceremony at the legion on July fifteenth at four P M. We received communication from the legion on that. And they also indicate anyone can bring old or tattered or damaged flags to be disposed of properly.
Mr. Chairman, do you mean June fifteenth?
No, June fifteenth.
I thought I heard.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Two days from there.
Two days, no, right. Okay, moving on to approval of minutes, five twenty-three, five twenty-seven, and five thirty-one. Is there a motion?
Make a motion we approve the minutes for Monday, May twenty-third as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, discussion.
I've got some changes.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, changes, Mary Lee.
Okay, I'm a great zucchini because I was both Zoom and I was here. And Joe was not here. That's my first. That's okay, that's okay. On the second page, it's John, that spelling's completely wrong, the top of the second page. It should be a small T E, a large R I C L E. And he had an attachment, which it didn't show that there's an attachment. Let's see, down a little bit further, Wayne Pickett also had an attachment and it didn't show. It doesn't show on here. It is on the, it is on the website, but it's not on here.
Okay.
Let's see, down on the, on the bottom, about Castleton Village School, the draft minutes should be attached here on the village school minutes that Mike so nicely took for us. I guess that's it.
That's it.
Dick? Nothing in addition to what Mary Lee had. However, for clarity, you were here via Zoom, right, Joe?
I was.
So that needs to be changed. We need to strike, to be clear, we need to strike Mary Lee Harris's name from Zoom or add to Mark.
Okay.
Joe? Yes, aside from getting myself to attend the meeting, the, on page three, kind of about third of the way down, paragraph begins, Mary Drogi asked if a process has been established, et cetera. J. Mark stated T. Branick would like to have a decision of whether she should be inserted and purchased property for the struggle this year. Later in that same paragraph, J. M. also stated, he mentioned in the minutes of meeting that a commercial real estate agent contacted him, instead of contacted him, it should say spoke to the committee, comma, who indicated it could be a two-year timeframe. On page four, second paragraph, second line, J. Mark asked if, instead of what follows, I think it'd be clearer to say, if signage regarding the fact that the water was not potable could be more appropriate for children. And then in the warrants for approval, I'm not sure those should be called check warrants. And I defer to some of you with more history. The minutes say made a motion to approve check warrant number zero five two three. It's not really a check warrant, is it?
Yes, it is. That's exactly what it is.
It is a check warrant.
Yeah.
Well, I stand corrected. That's it.
That's it. Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes for that meeting indicate by, with your changes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we'll go on to the next one.
Okay, make a motion we approve the minutes for the special meeting for the bike and pedestrian accessibility scoping study on Friday, May twenty-seventh.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second, discussion. Joe?
I did not attend, so I have no comments about the minutes.
I didn't see anything.
Didn't see it, Mary Lee?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes of the twenty-seventh of May as proposed indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
You abstain. Moving on to the thirty-first.
Make a motion we approve the select board minutes for the special meeting on Monday, May thirty-first at five o'clock.
Second.
And a second, discussion. Mary Lee, have anything there?
No.
No?
No.
Joe, no? Okay. All those in favor of those minutes as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we'll go on to the heavy stuff. The dog warrants. We have.
Mr. Chairman, you just skipped over citizens' comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Citizen comments or items not on the agenda.
I don't see anyone responding.
Nobody responding? Okay, all right. If not, then we will now move on to the unlicensed dog report and warrant annual report from NEDRA.
I have a question.
Sure.
What do we do about it?
That's a good point, very good point. I believe the last time we had these, we referred them to the constable and the constable declined to follow up on them. So basically, there hasn't been any follow-up. Now, I do notice that there's a copy here for the animal control officer, but I don't know if he's going to do it or not.
Is there anything we can do to have it done?
Yeah, I suppose we could instruct or ask the animal control officer to follow up on these unlicensed animals.
I mean, it's twofold when it's eight hundred and sixteen dollars, but other than that, if you've got a dog, you should register it.
Well, yes, and you also have, you also have the possibility of rabies problem, health problem as well. So seeing that, what's your pleasure, folks?
I made a motion that we ask the animal control officer to follow up on these.
Is there a second? Second and a second, discussion.
Just one thing, we'll have to look at the budget and see how many hours we've budgeted in for because this will be potentially time concerning to make sure we have the funds to cover that. I think a conversation with the town manager when he's back from vacation would be.
Right, not that.
If you could do that, please, Jim.
Sure.
I'm asking you to.
Are you asking me to do that, Dick?
Since you're in the office every day.
I'm afraid so.
And like, you know, White gets back, he'll come on thirty-five, forty seconds to get his feet on the ground and then come up with stuff.
I'll be glad to follow up on that.
Thank you.
Okay, is, so we have a vote on asking the animal control officer to follow up on the unlicensed animals. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Carries. Chris, I believe you're up. Windows bid, wastewater treatment, that's number one.
Hey, windows.
Sorry, we don't have a podium for you tonight.
That's okay.
I think it's still at the town office, it was loaned to the college.
Yeah, I thought it came back over here, but John, again?
I just thought the extent of my knowledge.
Okay.
It could be updated.
Okay, so y'all, y'all should have a copy of the same bid I have. This was for replacement of two windows in the control, control building of the wastewater treatment plant. The two windows in question are not part of the twenty-year upgrade, they're separate. They're just doing the doors in the control room that we're able to get them to do, but they weren't doing the windows. So Portland Glass quoted us three thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars without tax, subtracting the tax out there. I got one estimate from last month. This here is an estimate from Joyce Construction dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. For the windows, it was estimated thirty-two hundred dollars, so a difference of thirty-nine dollars from two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one. I reached out to another company for windows, they couldn't get over here for an estimate, they were just busy. And I also reached out to a third party that did some work at the wastewater treatment plant before and never heard back. So I come to you tonight with a bid for three thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars for two replacement windows in the control building of the wastewater treatment facility and ask that you fund this or approve this as this has been going on since two thousand nineteen, over two windows. Why I don't, I do not know, but if you would like to look at the bid from two thousand nineteen, I could certainly pass it around.
What kind of windows?
They are double hung vinyl windows, replacing the old aluminum windows that were rebuilt.
Looking which way?
Well, if you're familiar with the control building and you walk into where Jeff and Russ's office area is and the lab, one faces the back towards the SBR building and the other one faces the left.
Thank you.
Right now, the, the windows that are in there now, basically, someone screwed plexiglass over them as part of the weather Vermont, weatherization program years ago. I don't know what they're insulated for, it's just plexiglass glued into the casing.
Make a motion we authorize the public works director to proceed with getting the windows replaced with Portland glass.
I'll second that.
And a second, discussion. This is in your budget, Chris?
Yes, we'll take it out of the operating budget if we can for this fiscal year out of the wastewater is what I would do with that.
And I need to, you need to refresh my memory on the number, I wasn't sure.
Oh, yes, so this bid that you have in front of you, or I'm sorry, estimate without tax is three thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
That's an estimate?
Yes, that's the estimate, yes.
Are we extra because we are in the municipality?
Yes, yeah.
I'm going to amend my motion to include the estimated cost of three thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Just one question, this includes the labor to remove, dispose of and replace?
Um, yes.
So it's over thirty?
I called in that because I noticed the labor wasn't on the estimate, it includes installation.
So, okay. And I worded that motion in such a way that if it goes over a few dollars, that's okay.
All of the favor of the motion as amended or corrected indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris, next one?
So either on the fuel tank or the?
Yeah, fuel tank.
It's the fuel tank, okay, that's tough. So this is a follow-up from the last time that came before you and briefed you on the status of our diesel fuel tank and system at the highway garage. So out of the three contractors that I considered, FPH Tank was the only company that really did what, did what they said they were going to do and provide estimate, actually come, put feet on the ground, touched it, measured it, and did all of that. So the bottom line is, is everything I briefed you on, and a few of you have a chance to see it firsthand, it's twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is now including the concrete works with the island, the piping, the new piping from the fuel, the diesel tank to the distributor, and includes the new gauge system, the reporting system, the whole shebang with labor. So that's where we are. If I, if I have to go into specifics, I will, but in the interest of time, I will, and since you've already been briefed on it, I will await the questions.
I visited the garage today. Not that I know a whole lot, but I will make a motion that we approve this because I can see where there's diesel on the ground. I can see, and he was telling me that you can't tell who's filling, filling their tank and if I happen to know the code, I could go up and fill my own. So I think it's time that we take the steps forward to cover this.
That's a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Joe, discussion. Joe, are you going to ask a question to Chris? Or me ask?
I have my own questions, why don't you ask me your favorite?
Where will money come from, Chris?
The unsigned carryover from the highway. I do have a comment to make. What is not included in this quote, which I confirmed today, is the addition of a smart dip reader. What the smart dip reader is, it allows you to remotely measure the tank. So one of the things I also did is I reached out to the state officials because going into this, it's obviously a factor, this cost and try to get what's most advantageous for the town. The smart dip reader basically allows you to remotely measure the tank. So I talked to accounting today and, you know, it was, it was mentioning to me it would be very, very appreciated from the accounting side if the smart dip was included. It's about two thousand dollars more, so that would bring us up to twenty-nine, five, two, five. So what I would recommend is if you are willing to entertain that, I would recommend that you would approve up to, up to thirty thousand dollars as a round figure.
That's acceptable to me. That's acceptable to me.
Mary Lee, would you consider amending your motion to add that?
Yeah, sure.
What did I say the first time? I made the motion that we do this proposal up to thirty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, discussion.
This will give us the, believe the accountability to know who's filling up when?
It will give you.
In which vehicle, et cetera?
Yes, it will, by name, by vehicle, any way we want to do it. There may be, we have to enter into it now. Now, right now, the earliest they think they could probably get here and do it is September. There was a window in September. They were straightforward and honest, we knew about that. The second thing that I'd like to point out before we go any further is down below in the estimate, they require twenty percent to lock in the contract. So basically, we would do something, from my understanding of the ordinary, which would be put down twenty percent of the total cost of the project upfront because, of course, what they're going to do is order all of the parts and the systems for this beforehand and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to make that crystal, crystal clear and.
Okay, anyone have a problem with that explanation?
Not as long as there's a contract.
Yeah, as long as we have a contract, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
A commitment from them.
Yep, and that's where it comes down here with the whole thing.
Okay. I'm sure they're mature in their business, so I have no problem with that.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? I'm sorry, Joe.
I just wanted to ask about the two other not included in the workscope items, Chris?
Handling of contaminated liquids or materials. So as you'll go up to the front, the first line item, customer will dispose of equipment. So any piping they take out is considered contaminated, if you will, with decent fuel. So it's on us to figure this out internally. And I, I don't see an issue with that. I'll throw a sawdust in it, or Brett will throw sawdust in it and remove it, excuse me, that way. Electrical work other than described, so the electrical work is just that, it's taking the existing conduit that's already there and hooking up the system. From what they saw, it shouldn't need anymore, but they always put that in there to say, well, you need a new widget. Or sometimes it's kind of like opening up a wall, you don't know what's in the wall until you open it up in some cases. So there's always, if you will, contingency to incur additional costs based on those factors, but base quote, no.
That's reasonable.
Okay, any other questions? No, Paul Scott. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. One more, Chris?
Yeah, one more. And we should be on the wastewater treatment facility fence, I believe, and the transfer station gates. So we did put out a bid packet and we made sure the local fence, fencing contractors all received a copy of this. Long story short is we received one bid back, which is the one you were holding from Perimeter Solutions Incorporated. We asked them to take a look at the wastewater fence, so that fence is in very degraded condition. It also requires us, town employees, to maintain the fence, and I will underscore that. And when I say maintain it, I mean removing the dead stumps and the vegetation from the fence in the future because that is a real problem. But per the town manager, he asked, we don't look into this, and I was actually surprised it showed up on the agenda tonight, but we're talking about four hundred and fifty linear feet of chain link fence that either needs to be repaired or replaced. Now, part of the bid packet was you will, we asked the contractor to salvage as much as he could from the existing fence and then replace what needed to be replaced. So as an example, the gate that's currently on the entrance to the facility would now be taken off and put on the rear, rear of the facility to access the road to where the well is for the, for the building. And a new aluminum sliding gate at the main entry to replace that. Just for that work at the wastewater facility, it's twenty-eight thousand dollars. It's twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Not thirty-five?
Well, I'm going to get to that, so as part of the bid, there's always more. As part of the bid, I also included the transfer station to replace the two gates that they have, the entry and exit gate, the transfer station. And there's a small part of the mid-fence line where it was backed into at one point, if you will, and it's bent up. Because those two gates are in, they're, I think it's something that we built at some time, some time ago. They're not on aluminum posts, they're basically like telephone poles stuck into the ground and some of them are rusty, they're corroded at the bottom. So eventually they're going to have to be replaced anyway. So the transfer station to replace the two gates and repair that part of the fence line was seven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. That's where the total of thirty-five, three, four, five comes into play.
I'd make a motion that we approve this contract with Perimeter Solutions in the amount of thirty-five thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars to repair and replace fencing at the wastewater treatment facility and at the transfer station.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second, discussion.
Just a quick question, the two, they're going to have to come out of two separate budgets, obviously.
Correct.
And the, is there a reserve account for the fence that will cover the fencing at the?
At the wastewater, at the wastewater it will. And talking with, speaking with the town manager, he was hoping to get the money for the transfer station gates out of its existing operating budget.
Okay.
As of last week, I spoke to him. I will again underscore that, and I'm being open and honest here, that the fence needs to be maintained. It's in the town's best interest for the fence to be maintained. There's a lot of vegetation out there.
Is that your way of saying that the maintenance might have been?
I am definitely, I am definitely going on the record and I am saying that.
Okay.
Yep. And it's not recent, it's those stumps this big growing through the fence. Be perfectly honest with you.
Okay.
So those stumps are older than myself.
Any other questions or, Chris, on this? So the staff will be expected to clear the brush of the new fence?
They have been instructed, they have been instructed to start clearing it now. And it is, it is a challenge, I know it's a challenge, just based on the terrain because it drops off, there's rocks, it's hard to get behind it. So in order to maintain it, it has to be done regularly. It just, it can't go, it'd be done once a year. So there's some work involved in this on our part.
So the disciplines to do that are being established?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Wait a minute, don't go away.
There's one more?
Yeah, we've got a lot more for you.
Okay.
So you're going to be leaving shortly?
My last day will be this Thursday.
And you won't be headed north, you'll be headed south?
I will be headed south.
You'll be headed south. I'm sure, speaking for the board, we'd like to thank you for your service to the town of Castleton, and we're sorry to see you leave, but we'd like to wish you the very best.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the.
And your family.
Thank you. Thank you all for the opportunity as well.
How far south?
South Carolina.
You're a wimp.
I know, I know.
Thanks again, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, moving on, the Castleton Bridge Initiative, we have a communication from Bill Wood. Bill, you're up.
Okay, this was just a progress report. We did have Suppata Courage visit the site, walk the path, and her. And her letter is attached to my letter. Basically, she's saying as long as we have a primitive path that goes around trees, that there are no permits required. And that is what, what we intend to do. There is one, one spot we need to build a little bridge. There's a drainage ditch that comes down to the upriver side of the viewing spot. And there's a downed pine tree. What we plan on doing is, is cutting a piece out of the pine tree, which is right in our path, split it, and use that as a walk across the ditch. Other than that, there, there don't seem to be any problems. We have cut the path with a string trimmer twice. And what we're hoping to do is get the town, when when Dewey Fielders mowed, to mow the path. It's about 70 feet long, so it would take one cut in, one cut out. I did trim it Saturday. So it's, it's pretty clearly marked. So the next time they do cut the grass, just make that quick little pass on the path and out again. So that was really all, all I intended to provide. We still are making plans for the path, but we haven't firmed, firmed up anything yet.
Any questions for Bill and the Bridge Committee? No? No? Joe?
I just want to say, I appreciate your effort, Bill and Martha.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on. Another controversial item. Lions Club requests permission to hang a banner advertising the auction at, after July 4th in the use of Village Green. Set up on 7/29 with the auction to be held 8/3 and 8/4. Rain date, 8/5.
Make a motion, we grant the permission as requested.
Second.
And a second. Okay. Any questions? Discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Recreation requests to carry over funds. We have a communication from Martha Clifford. Regarding this topic is, is there a motion?
Well, I don't know that we can make a motion if we don't know what the, what the dollar value of the... They're asking us to encumber money, is that, am I understanding correct?
Probably so, but I think we have the data through April, but we don't have May and June. And according to the town accountant, usually that's a busy month because they're starting up their summer programs. But as to numbers, no, we don't.
I'm trying to remember.
I know.
Once again, I, you know, like, what exactly the process is to encumber money. Do we have to have a dollar amount in use for it? Or did we not? I don't recall actually.
You could probably say a portion, or you could say all.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Well, take what you guys want of time, go ahead, Dick.
Or we could defer it to the last meeting in June, when we're probably going to be encumbering money for other items as well.
Okay. Okay, Joe?
The point that I wanted to make is that I have a different letter. I don't have a letter requesting that Clumsby carried over, but I have a different letter from Martha requesting permission to use Castleton Village School for their adventure camp this summer.
You have a similar letter I have?
That's in this letter here.
Oh, it's in here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it's in here, yeah.
And the last paragraph, the last paragraph is where they're requesting that we encumber funds.
Right, so I, I think we can act on the first request.
Okay.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we and, and just by way of back, well, let me make the motion first, that we grant permission to Castleton Recreation Commission to use Castleton Village School this summer as they have outlined in this June 2020 letter.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second. Discussion?
I'm, I'm questioning, I'm not against this, but I'm questioning they specifically have certain classrooms that they want. And if somewhere, somewhere along between June, July, and August, we sell, lease, or whatever, they have to be a little more flexible and maybe not get those in the back rooms.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm sure that the summer camp can be flexible if we have to change classrooms.
Is that you, Martha?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Martha.
I have no, no problem with it, as long as there's flexibility there.
Anybody else?
Nope.
If not, all those in favor of the motion to allow the use of Village School for the summer camp indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Second portion. Dick, had a question on that?
I would suggest that we postpone that until the last meeting in June, when the town manager is present and we have a little more information on specifically what we can and cannot.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
It doesn't need to be a motion.
Hold it. Hold it. Okay, Martha.
Okay, this is Martha again.
Yes, Martha.
I would, I would be okay with that, and the other thing that has come to mind is that maybe we can't get a figure until later on. Melanie might be able to give us a ballpark of what's there. I have an idea of what's there, but I don't see everything that's being, you know, all the POs and all of that. So I would be okay with postponing that till the last meeting in June.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is Melanie Combs, town accountant.
Yes, Melanie.
My recollection of how this has proceeded or morphed over the past three or four years in regards to encumbering money from one fiscal year to the next, I believe the town manager has presented you with a list in terms of it being a single resolution for varying departments. And within that, it's been for specific things. Not a blanket holdover, anything we don't spend kind of concept. So, I'm assuming that Martha is working on what that money would be needed for, because that would be part of your resolve to carry it over.
Thank you, Melanie. Anything else on this?
Do we need a motion to table this act until next meeting?
Is there a second? And a second? All those in favor of tabling it till next meeting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, table. Now, we're going to the substitute update, Castle Village School. Mary Lee and Joe?
I have handouts for you. I think you've seen two of these documents before, but I can't swear to that. One of them is a document that the town manager prepared in February. Prior to Town Meeting Day. It was a four-page information sheet on some of the issues that under consideration with, with respect to the vote that was going to be on the town meeting ballot. And that includes, among other things, some of the details of the annual operating expenses that the school incurred to manage and run the building. A second document is a proposal from a group of Castleton citizens, specifically the Castleton Village Square, I'm sorry, the Community Village Square proponents. And this includes the Rec Commission and the Boys and Girls Club of Rutland County. And the third document is, is a fact sheet that I developed in consultation with Mary Lee that puts forth one financial analysis of the two major options that might be considered. The first being, the, this would be consistent with the excuse me, Community Village Square concept, that the town continues to own the building and might lease portions of it, both to ABC Daycare and the Rutland, the Boys and Girls Club of Rutland County. And I have to insert a caveat. There are dollar lease values in this fact sheet, which I took from the proposal that the Rec Commission submitted. And these are based on the lease, the square footage lease value that our appraiser gave us. But I could not say that these are certain proposals. I could not say that Tiersa Brannick, the owner of ABC Daycare, is prepared to pay $42,350 for approximately a third of the bill bit. And I believe, because there's been close collaboration between the Boys and Girls Club and the writers of the proposal, I assume that the Boys and Girls Club is prepared to lease approximately a quarter of the space for $24,000. But, what, what this shows you is that where one proposal that some had suggested was that we sell the building and lease it back, that would not necessarily be less expensive than owning the building and leasing it to other entities. Have I confused you completely?
Quite the contrary.
No, I don't think so. Mary Lee, what would you like to add to that?
I think you did a very good job.
That looks good, Mary Lee.
So I want to be clear here, Joe, we have, this, this is the document that you prepared.
Yes.
And then this is the document that the the Village Square proponents?
Yes.
Created, and this is the one that Mike did back?
In February.
In February. So, I got a little more homework to do on it.
Yep, me too. So, one of the things that I think Mary Lee would advise at this point is that we plan a meeting with the Joint Select Boards of Castleton and Hubbardton. You may remember, we recently approved a memorandum of understanding related to the Castleton Village School. And that, the same night that we approved that, the Hubbardton Select Board approved the same document. And that has a provision in it which relates to what should happen if the towns are contemplating selling or leasing the building on its property. And I, I, you know, I, I don't know that we're all prepared to make a decision in the near future, but we should certainly discuss our options and how we think about them.
Is the On Park Committee prior to that, prepared to make a recommendation to both boards?
We have a meeting on the 16th.
Okay. 15th?
16th.
16th, okay, all right, okay.
And it's at, and it's at the Village School.
Okay.
And we are having Zoom this time.
Okay.
The over the years, I've heard from various individuals that there are restrictions on the property. And I'm, I'm, I'm not at all familiar with the process of deed research, but I did a little this morning. And indeed, there was a grant to the town by Samuel Moulton of a particular piece of property that has restrictions on it, that it should be used for instruction and as a school. I can't identify what piece of property that is, because it references a neighbor's property, William Walcott. And I cannot find a map that indicates where that was. But I, I think we do need to kind of ramp up the legal research on this question. From my point of view, the uses that are being contemplated could be considered to fall broadly under the category of education.
I think maybe that's something that Ted can address later in the evening.
Right.
Okay, anything else on this?
Not at present.
Nope.
Me too. Not at present. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, this is Martha again.
Yes, Martha.
I'm sorry, I had my, my computer run mute and I couldn't get in before you ended your discussion. But all I would like to ask if a copy of what Joe just presented could be put in my mailbox so that we can look at our?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
We, we've been putting everything related to Castleton Village School that seems to be of general relevance into a folder on the Select Board section of the website. So, we'll put all three of these documents there, although I think one or two of them might already be there.
Is that okay, Marla?
Yep, that's okay.
Okay. Anything else on this? If not, we'll move on to Ruby Salt Shed, the lease, two years. It's my understanding the lease is basically the same as it has been.
Yeah, I looked it over, it didn't look any different to me this time. Seen this like four times before.
Yes.
You probably more than that.
No.
So I'll make a motion that we approve and agree to the lease agreement between the town of Castleton and Ruby Construction for the leasing of the salt shed on their property.
For a two-year period?
For a two-year period.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Say none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, now we can go on to the manager's report and ask Mike various questions.
Before we do that?
He's still on the vote.
I, I think. And you said July 50, that's what this piece of paper says for the flag, the supposed ceremony? So maybe it is July, not June?
No, it's, it's June 50, it's June 50.
So this piece of paper is incorrect?
It is incorrect.
Okay.
That is my understanding. I hope I'm, I hope I'm right, Dick.
Well, I'm going to trust you.
We'll, we'll check it out tomorrow to be sure.
Either you're ready or not.
If it's, if it's not June 50, Mary Lee, do you happen to know if it's June 15?
I think it is June. But if anyone shows up with flags, there's a big bureau to keep them in until the date. I know it's usually done on Flag Day, but it's not going to be exactly Flag Day. And I'm not sure when Flag Day is.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow's Flag Day, but Ben Boss from the Legion said it was some kind of a conflict, so they had to do it the next day.
Okay. Okay.
So then we'll put it June 15th.
Yes.
Anything else on this? Any comments, questions on the manager's report?
I don't have anything. We can't wait till he gets back.
Mary Lee? No? Joe? Want to wait for him to come back, Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
And I hope he was able to replace his wardrobe.
Yes.
Well, do you want to know more? What happened? He lose his luggage?
I don't know. Well, I was in the office and Karen was filling Melanie in on a little problem that occurred. Apparently there was some extremely odoriferous luggage in the luggage hold, such that it made everything that was down there smell terrible.
Oh boy.
And it basically had to be condemned. And they wouldn't allow him to take it into the building because it smelled so bad. So I hope they have clothing stores up there.
Oh boy. Okay, anything else on the manager's report? If not, we'll move on. Purchase orders for approval.
You have any?
I got them. I got them right here for you, Dick.
Okay, make the motion to approve purchase order number 048578 for the Castleton first responders for their points fund for $3,500.
Second?
And a second. Discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve purchase order number 048556 to Nemrick for the annual support contract for $5,000.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion?
That's Nemrick.
That's the computer outfit.
The big software.
Service of software.
Everything runs on.
That's about as much as I know about it, Mary Lee.
Okay.
What's a computer?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Next one.
Make a motion we approve purchase order number 048067 to the Treasurer for the County of Rutland for the county tax for fiscal year '23 for $40,261.63.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
On that many years ago, the county tax was $30,000.
Right.
There you go. There you go, Boss.
Okay, is that all we have on those deck?
I only have three.
You only have three. All right, now moving on to the warrants.
Make a motion we approve warrant number 0613R for $647. Warrant 0613 for $98,968.59. Warrant 0609 for $10,291.69. Warrant 0602 for $6,691.92. Warrant 0531 for $2,616.60. Warrant 0526 for $7,091.30. Warrant 0609P for $19,517.58. Warrant 0602P for $19,410.31. And warrant 0526P for $18,571.49.
I'll second that.
And a second. Discussion of these warrants. Saying none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion through.
I'd make a motion that we approve check warrant number 0610P for $634.29. Number 0603P for $634.28. Number 0527P for $634.28.
I'll second you.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
You gotta let me recuse myself.
Boy, I will. And Dick will recuse himself, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, Joe.
Double check your little key there, Jim.
Yep. Okay, please.
Dick, a reminder, are you going to? You got your instructions?
I do.
Okay.
We're all good. There's no bullet holder tonight, just a regular?
That's all.
I don't see the bullet. Use your handle.
All right.
I'm all the way.
I could have come without him, but you're younger than I am.
Bob's not here, so I'm the youngest one here today. Bob's not here, so I'm the youngest one here.
Right. I was gonna try to call him, but didn't know if he was...
Is he working?
Yeah, he's working.
Is he driving the bus again, or is he?
Yeah.
Doing all this stuff?
John Torque.
How many were looking for? 12?
Yes.
Joe, you missed one.
I did that intentionally so I could get out from the structure.
Actually, you missed two.
So this is...
I have nine with my signature. There should be three more that I don't sign.
Thank you.
Let me get it off. Well, based, doesn't come off as good. All right, Paul, Joe.
Okay, great.
Okay. Select Board comments and/or concerns. Mary Lee?
Yes. I have a question as to who gave the power to our town manager to have Zach Hale add an ambulance bay to the Sand Hill project? I have no record that the Select Board asked him to do this. This property would no longer be owned to the town. Who is going to build and maintain the structure? If the town, would we have to lease the property from the new owners? Is this budgeted? If not, should we go to the voters for support and funding? Is there a better space for the ambulance bay? I understand behind the existing firehouse, we have an HAC 250 approval for a two-story building. Wouldn't that be ideal as it's near the medical center? It's near the ramp to Route 4, as well as being in the center of town?
Okay.
And I...
We have it.
...in Pasmore.
Yeah, we have it. Thank you.
And if this could be attached to the minis, please?
Certainly. Anything else? Dick?
No.
Joe?
I'll second.
Your second? Okay.
Just a quick comment here, just so you know. Just so you know, Mary Lee, that the approval for the building behind here is 24 foot by 24 foot, one-story building. I'm pretty sure that was what was on the drawing that was submitted to the state. I haven't seen that drawing in quite three years, but pretty sure that's what it was.
Okay, any other comments? Concerns? Saying none. Executive session, I believe we need one for real estate and also one for labor relations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's correct. Okay.
So do you want to do real estate first?
Let's do real estate first, yes. Ted's here.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for real estate with the Select Board and the Town Attorney, Ted Berisi, at 8:01.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.